Good morning, everyone. I'm Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I want to welcome you to our May edition of our Government Affairs Committee meeting. We've got a great guest with us this morning, which who Rush will introduce in just a minute. I do want to thank you for joining us. We've got a good group of over 70 people signed up for our webinar this morning. So obviously, a lot of people want to hear what Katrina has to say. Katrina is going to give her talk. I think she has a PowerPoint presentation. Then she's going to leave about 20 minutes towards the end for questions and answers. So if you do have a question that you think of as we're moving through this morning, please type it into the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen, not the chat box, in the Q and A box, please. And we'll be getting to those questions at the conclusion of her initial presentation. So with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Rush. I'll have some concluding remarks and tell you some of our other upcoming guests and great programs that we have going on towards the end of the meeting. So there you go, Rush. Take it away.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning to everyone. Always good to see you at Governmental Affairs. Hopefully, one of these days, we'll be able to set in person. After we have our primary speaker this morning, we're going to also hear from the offices of Michelle Steele and I believe Senator Men. We're still kind of on hold waiting to see there. And Assemblywoman Country Petri Norris. So we have a good program for you this morning. Our keynote speaker this morning, Katrina Foley, is a member, in case you haven't got up to speed, of the Orange County Board of Supervisors, representing District Two in California. She assumed office in March 26 of 20,021. I'm sure for her first three or four years, she'll be called the new supervisor, but we're glad to have her on board. She's a consumer attorney and former mayor of the city of Costa Mesa, who served on the city council for 11 years. She previously was a member of the Newport Mesa School Board and served on several local nonprofit boards and commissions. She's a proud graduate of Head Start and Pell Grant recipient. Katrina understands what it's like to grow up in a family facing financial challenges. As a daughter of a wife of a union members, Katrina has always stood with California's workers and working families in their efforts to organize and collectively bargain. In law school, Katrina established the school's first Women's Resource Center to serve domestic violence victims and chaired the Women's Law Caucus. The small clinic is now a well-established for credit clinic run by the law school. Katrina was at the city of Costa Mesa. She was the first Pregnant Planning Commissioner. And at that time, she initiated challenging changing tables in the restrooms and a nursing station for employees and new IKEA at a new IKEA development. Her husband, Kathy, and she with their two sons, ten, two sons having attend public school, and her husband is a teacher. So we are very pleased to have the the new supervisor with us. And believe me, she is a problem solver and an individual with a lot of energy. So Katrina, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Rush. We're going to have to get you abbreviated bio. My whole life story there. But I'm really privileged to be here today and talk to you about some of the work that we're doing already here in District Two. We've gotten right to work. We hired our Chief of Staff. Her name is Debbie Lumpkin. She is with, she was with Edison for 25 years. So she has a lot of experience in managing large budgets as well as a lot of people, which is helpful to us here. And she is also an expert in business, making sure that we have a diverse business contracting going on. So what one of our priorities is here in District Two is to make sure that the businesses that are local, that are within District Two and without throughout Orange County have access to some of these procurement contracts that we have right here in Orange County. I feel like this is the easiest way for us to really improve our economy here in Orange County. And after having served on three meetings so far, I can tell you there are hundreds of millions of contracts that the county issues. And so we want to make sure that our local businesses right here in District Two have access and understand how to how to really get involved in in those contracts. Anything from buying flags. We bought our flags here from a Newport Beach business. And also Easy Ups, supplies for the office, building fences, plumbing contracts, you name it. The county has a lot of contracts, and we want to make sure that Orange County businesses are really benefiting from those contracts. So that's one of our priorities. We're also really working hard to make sure that we have COVID recovery. I know we're so close. We've got to the yellow tier now here in Orange County. And for those of you who don't know, that means that most things can be open. Some require some still some social distancing. But we really are moving in the direction of June 15th and having the entire state open up. I know I'm excited about that. I know that the business owners that I talk to are just thrilled that they can sort of start to get back to normal. And part of how we are contributing to the to the community cause is that we've stood up tons of community clinics here in District Two for vaccinations. Prior to joining the board here, our district didn't have any community clinics. And we weren't really, we didn't have a super pod. Since that time, we've vaccinated in District Two hundreds of thousands of residents. So we're really proud of that work. We have a community clinic in Newport Beach on May 26. And so if you know of anyone who still needs to get vaccinated and wants to, we'll be there on May 26 at the Oasis Senior Center. So looking forward to seeing you all there. As far as vaccinations go, Orange County is doing extremely well. We have now nearly 2 million residents in Orange County. And just to remind you all, we have about 3.2 million residents in Orange County. Of those eligible ages 12 and up to be able to be vaccinated, we've vaccinated about 2 million already, at least with one shot. So we are on our way, but we still have more work to do. Our office is here to help. You can reach us at 714-834-3220. If you know of anyone who's having trouble getting vaccinated or can't figure out how to use the Othena app, these days you don't need to make a registration appointment in advance. You can just go to the OC Fair any day of the week and drive up, get out of your car, go to the line, and our staff there will be really friendly and help you with the process. So no appointments are necessary. And so we want to spread the word on that. We hope you'll help us. And the OC Fair is open also tonight until 8:00 p.m. It's daily till 5:00, but on Thursdays till 8:00 p.m. to accommodate working people. And so as far as the vaccines go for Newport Beach, I'll get my handy, oh, he took it. So our COVID Relief Officer is Nick Anis, and he has been working really hard. And it looks like in Newport, we need to do a little bit more work. We're still in that close to 55% range in terms of community vaccination. So we want to try to get some more residents in Newport vaccinated. Newport Coast, I'll report, is the winner in Newport. They are doing really well and as well. So we'll, we'll keep working on that. We've also had a great opportunity to bring on two policy advisors. We have a policy advisor for public safety is our own chief, Dave Snowden. He's a Newport Beach resident. He's also the former Costa Mesa Police Chief and Beverly Hills Police Chief. And it's been great to have him on board so he can help us because there's there's so much more as a supervisor that you deal with in law enforcement than there ever was as mayor. We also brought on this week another policy advisor for transportation and sustainability. He will be our point person for all things JWA, as well as Orange County Transportation Authority and any of our climate action initiatives, as well as our active transportation program, which we are really going to have some robust initiatives. His name is Adam Arith, and he is a Costa Mesa resident, longtime resident. His uncle is actually Art Perry, who many of you know, who is on our sanitation district board. So we're excited to have Adam on board. He's just getting his PhD in water quality from the University of South Carolina. He's got a lot of great experience in government and understanding how to get things done in a bureaucracy that support businesses and support our climate action initiatives. We had a tour this week of John Wayne Airport and all the FBOs. And we got to understand, a deeper understanding rather, of some of the issues that are going on there. What are some of the priorities of the airport operations? And also, how can we use the airport as a way to have some workforce development initiatives? That's really dear to my heart. One of my priorities is to create some workforce development apprentice programs right here with the county in partnership with business, in partnership with some of our departments. And so the airport has so many job opportunities that we can capitalize on for our our students. And so we want to work on that. But we're also excited about appointing Newport Beach resident Sue DeVorek as our commissioner for JWA. And she's already gotten right to work and getting into all the different details, making sure that we are protecting our community and in making sure that we have a fly quiet program in place. We're going to be bringing you more information about that in the in the weeks to come as we form our airport advisory team here in District Two, which we'll announce probably in two weeks after we get through the budget hearings, three weeks. And let's see, we also have been involved in working with our parks. And OC Parks has so many great programs. We also want to make sure that our open spaces are protected. We were able to protect some open space that was sort of going to be sold here recently. And I think the community, we had like 750 petitions signed to protect the open space at the upper Newport Back Bay. So I was happy to facilitate that. Let's see, what else? We're in the process of talking with Newport Beach Banning Ranch, as well as the Banning Ranch Conservancy and our Assemblywoman Cotty Petri Norris about opportunities for Banning Ranch as a coastal park. So stay tuned for more to come on that. And you'll start to see our office really push out our economic development program. And Avery is our constituent services manager for District Two, and he represents Newport Beach. Say hi, Avery. And he's going to show a slide. We're having a job fair on June 23rd. It's a virtual job fair. One of the real concerns I've been hearing, especially over this last week, is mostly from our restaurant industry. And they're just getting hammered with not having any ability to find employees. So we go from not being able to be open and suffering from that, and then not being able to have any employees once you are open, and then really suffering the impacts there. So our office is trying to put together a program where we can partner with employers and employees to bring employees to the employers. This is a really great virtual job fair that Supervisor Lisa Bartlett held in her district, and it was wildly successful. So we, we talked to her, and we're deciding that this is something we could do in our district. And so if you want to participate, Avery will, I'm not sure if the chat is working, but we'll put it in the Q and A maybe. But there's a way to participate and sign up to be one of the employers. We'd love to have the Newport Beach Chamber as a partner. It doesn't cost you anything. We just want you to help us promote it. And then we also formed a Veterans Advisory Committee. And our Veterans Advisory Team is already hard to work. We've taken up some bills that they were promoting at the state legislature that would support veterans. And then we've also partnered and we're putting on a, in partnership with the California Veterans Chamber of Commerce, which we'd love to have Newport partner on, we're putting together a Veterans Program where we can teach our veteran business owners how to access these procurement contracts, public works contracts. And also, we're going to share about a program that the county is hosting, which is a veterans' job opportunity, where if you hire a veteran and you go through the county program, we have funds from the state and federal government that that we can pay for the wages of that veteran to work for your firm. So as the sister of a veteran, my brother was 22 years in the Army and retired with a medical disability. I know how important transitioning into civilian life is. And if you're an employer and you're willing to employ some of our veterans who sacrifice so much for our country, we would love to partner with you and help pay those wages so we can get those veterans in jobs and their lives stabilized. We've also on our legislative front, because we have our Deputy Chief of Staff, Nick Anis, who has a lot of legislative background. He comes from Senator Umberg's office. We were able to put forth in the budget for this budget cycle at the state level several items for water quality projects in District Two. A total more than $90 million in water quality projects. And we're crossing our fingers. We got a word yesterday that at least four of our projects possibly have made it into the trailer bill. We'll know more about that in the coming weeks. But if we can get those, those water quality projects that we're already working on at the county and city levels, if we can get those approved in the state budget, those funds will get released from the local budgets, and we can use those for other matters. So this is just a tip of the iceberg of some of the work that we're doing. Every day, I try to get out into the community. Our constituent services team is out. We're here to serve. You can follow us on all of our social media handles at Supervisor Foley. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, Supervisor, it sounds like you have a lot of free time on your hands. We'll, we'll see what we can do. Not a question, but you might comment on your newsletter.
Oh, thank you.
How to access it?
Well, our newsletter is out every Friday. And I'm not sure, Avery, can you go to our website on the, on the official side, of course? Our newsletter comes out every Friday, and we would love a submission. Our own Steve Rosansky here was featured in our newsletter last week. We're doing sort of a chamber spotlight every week, and we would love to have you join us. Avery, can you use the share screen and go to the website so people can see that where they can sign up? But yeah, that's something. We have a COVID update. We also, we also provide update every week. You can, as soon as you go to the homepage, you can subscribe right there. And you're, we send it out every Friday. We do community events. We have a pet of the week. And we also try to give a transparency section because one of my priorities is really to make sure that residents and taxpayers know, thank you, Avery, that they know what it is we're doing here in District Two. And we have a report from each of our commissioners that is given and included in the newsletter each week from the commission appointees that we have. So we're trying really hard to get the word out.
So Rosansky was your pet of the week on your first announcement?
People like pets. They like them better than their kids. I'll order that column any day.
All right. Let's see. Do we have any questions, Steve?
Yeah, well, we have some of the Q and A. And I'll just reiterate to the group here, please, if you do have a question that you'd like us to ask Supervisor Foley, please put it in the quick Q and A box so that we can get your questions answered. I'm going to start off with a question because it was something I was reading about this morning. But you know, it, it seems like there's going to be a flood of cash coming into the county from various sources, whether it's from the federal government or the state under their, you know, the Newsom's budget. What are your ideas for spending this extra, extra money?
Well, so my priorities for, if we get any extra money, you know, we haven't had that great of a relationship with the state, and I'm trying to do my part to rebuild some of the relationship. It's hard sometimes because some of my colleagues can't help but poke the bear. And so we, what, a good example is the trailer bill that Senator Umberg is helping us to participate in. While our senator here in Newport and Costa Mesa is Senator Men, we also gave him some bills that are some priorities that we wanted him to help us fund. Senator Umberg also represents my district, so I have two senators that overlap. And so infrastructure is a priority for for these funds because not only is some of our infrastructure old and needing to be updated, but it creates jobs. And so those are two priorities that I really feel strongly about using the funds for. Secondly,
before, is this traditional infrastructure? Or I guess what is looking to be at the federal level more 50/50, traditional as a, and sort of social infrastructure?
Oh, yeah. So let me clarify. I'm talking about roads, multipurpose trail systems, flood channel improvements, storm basin improvements, anything water quality, especially anything that's on the coast that's protective of our oceans and our beaches, as well as broadband. That's infrastructure that we've really not gotten up to speed on in terms of as a whole. And so those are the kinds of infrastructure, libraries, schools, anything where you can improve the quality of the buildings and help us to get more longevity. So that's, that's my, what I mean by infrastructure. We have also an opportunity, and I've been talking to OCTA about this. And I know you, Newport, the 55 terminus has for years been an issue for both cities, Costa Mesa and Newport. And the cut and cover was discussed many years ago. It kind of got shelved. I have an idea. I'm floating. I'd love to get feedback on a sort of what you call a cap. You could cap the 55 there and then move under the downtown, create a downtown, build housing and a park and retail, build a community really, and eliminate a lot of that traffic. That's a long-term plan, but that's an infrastructure project that some of these federal dollars could be used for, and it creates a lot of jobs. So that's, and it also helps us with our housing needs. So those priorities, priorities for community health. Now, we've all been talking about the vaccine and wearing face masks and all this to avoid COVID. But our community health and wellness over the last year has deteriorated because of COVID. I know I've put on a few pounds. I'm sure others have. So trying to help get our community health from sitting here all the time, not moving, but from trying to help get our community health concerns back, food and securities. I've been speaking a lot to people who are homebound and in-home caregivers, who are caring for people at home who are disabled. And they have a need for, you know, basic things like incontinent supplies and toiletries, things that we don't really think about, families needing diapers. You know, these are some of the things that I think we can use some of these funds for. Those are the small things. The infrastructure projects is where the big dollars can go. And then we're asking for some funding for our Be Well Centers that are in the northern part and the southern part of the county. And that'll be a navigation style of center with mental health services. And so those are, those are some real needs that we have here in Orange County to help with reducing homelessness and addressing mental health in our community. So yes, those are, those are some of the priorities for me for the money. I've been, I've tried twice to get the board to support my business grant program. I was wanting to give money back to businesses. I know how hard our local businesses, especially our restaurants, our personal care centers, our fitness centers, Pilates clubs, yoga centers and the like, have been hit by COVID, and the rent is due. I couldn't get our colleagues to understand that people still need money. They were really, I don't know, I feel like they gave out enough money. But in District Two, we, I know in Costa Mesa, and I know Newport did the same, we actually supplemented the money that the county gave to us from the CARES Act funding when I was mayor, and we added $4 million to it, and it was not enough. So I think we'll get through this summer, and hopefully, everyone will stabilize. But I'll still keep fighting for our local businesses. I have a couple of questions that I see in the queue. Good morning, Dennis. Good morning.
Bob Hartman has asked, will the vaccination digital passport be revisited?
You know, I don't see that happening with this board. However, they're still telling me that it's on pause, whatever that means. So what's happening at the state level, at the international level, is that there are requirements to have to fly to Europe, for example, to have a digital proof of vaccination. So at some point, if someone wants to participate in these kinds of activities and the, either the airlines, the country, or the business that they want to go to requires additional vaccination, they're going to have to find some way to get it. It's just right now not going to come from the county as a convenient tool. We got a lot of, you know, blow up on that. But I want to remind everyone, 2 million people in Orange County have been vaccinated. So the great super majority of residents believe in vaccinations. It's just a small vocal group that is deterring us from doing what I think is a really convenient, safe, HIPAA-protected opportunity for voluntary opt-in people to get a proof of their vaccine, make it convenient for consumers.
Nancy Scarborough has asked, on your JWA tour, did you discover anything unique or new that you can share with us today?
Unique or new? Yeah, well, I got a little, you know, as a, as the mayor and as a resident, I've been following the airport issues. I know it's super important to Newport. And I will, I am prioritizing the airport, which is why I have a policy advisor that is on point. And that is their, one of their main jobs on our team. And so I've been following a lot of the airport and a lot of the, the plans for the general aviation that were approved. But I'd never been able to have like the kind of in-depth tour of, say, Jay's maintenance and operations there. So we did get an in-depth tour of all the small plane and the mechanical, like all the mechanics that they do there, their FBO program and their new hangar program that they're doing. And so I did learn a lot about that. Also, one of my first tasks as a board member was to, okay, signing off on declining Clay Lacy's request to extend their space. So protecting our, you know, how do I say it? Not allowing any expansion of the airport operations.
That's a popular policy in the city of Newport Beach.
Yes, we will prioritize that.
You'll make friends.
Well, and I think too, what's important that I also learned, Nancy, is that the, a lot of the planes, some of the newer planes have such better technology. And that's where some of those funds may be able to go, is to helping to improve the technology of airlines so that, you know, the newer planes are very quiet, and you don't even know they're there. We just don't have enough of those. And I want to address Dennis's comment. I'll make sure to reach out to Barry at the airport and let him know about that noise violation. We will be monitoring that, and we're getting a briefing here soon. It's getting on the calendar where we'll have a sort of a PowerPoint that we're putting together to summarize the, the noise violations over the last year and to make recommendations to the airport as to how we can encourage the airlines to fly quieter.
Yeah, I'll ask this question by Robert Morris, because I was, I was kind of intrigued by it as well. There was a, well, a related article in the paper about the Irvine City Council having, or maybe they should increase the number of council people because they're such a large city now. They only have five council members. Any thoughts on increasing the number of supervisors from five to say seven?
I don't have any thoughts on that today, but, but we are, we represent in District Two. I don't have any thoughts on that today, but, but we are, we represent in District Two six hundred thousand residents. And so it's a rather large district with eleven, well, ten cities and an unincorporated area of Rossmore. And we are going to be embarking on the redistricting process. June twenty second, mark your calendars, is our first entree into this process. The county staff will be providing an overview of the process, how it's going to work, where we'll have community workshops, how you can get involved and how we'll have this interactive map. In fact, we're voting on the vendor on Tuesday. But it's going to be an interactive map, you know, you and Rush can type in, what do you want the district to look at, look like? And, and put together some maps. And the great thing about this vendor that we're looking at for Tuesday is one of the features of their software is that it will test for integrity so that if you put in a map that you, you know, you think this would be a great district, it tests for all the different legal requirements. So that if it doesn't meet the test, then there's no reason to put forth that map because it's dead on arrival. So it'll tell you right away if it doesn't meet the test. I think that's a really great tool for the community and for the board, really.
Yeah, and I, I think you can't stress the importance of getting involved in that redistricting process because that will set the districts for the next ten years, or at least until, you know, the next census.
Yeah.
And a lot of, you know, important decisions are, and, and elections are based on how those districts wind up. You know, in your capacity as a supervisor, you have the ability to appoint people to various boards and commissions or any holes you're looking to fill that people watching might be interested in?
Yes, we're taking applications right now for planning commissioner. So it's an important position in the county and one of my most important commission appointments. And so I've taken a little more time to make that appointment. And so if you're interested in applying for the position of planning commissioner, you can send an email to katrina.foley@ocgov.com. And Avery can put that in the chat. And just send your resume and like a cover letter with your interests. And I'll be doing interviews over the next few weeks.
Honestly, I didn't even know there was a county planning commission.
Yeah, because you know, the county has unincorporated land, quite a bit of unincorporated land.
Yeah, that makes sense. Go ahead, Russ.
The Heidi Hall has asked a question. I think I'll try to summarize it. Are you aware of any F A A survey related to the next gen flight path? And do you know if they received a significant amount of signatures to, to cause any change in that arena?
I'm aware of the survey. I'm not sure about whether, what the requirement was on signatures, but I'll have somebody look into that. But I am aware of the survey. I'm aware that at the congressional level, that there's been a lot of discussion because it's not just in Orange County that people are concerned about the next gen, but it's all across the United States where we have airports that are near residential neighborhoods. And so I'll make sure that Adam gets us an update on that and what's the status? And we can put that in our newsletter. And Sue, if you're on, maybe you can work with Adam on that. I don't know if Sue's on the call.
Lynn Hackman here is asking about ADUs in Costa Mesa. So you weren't the mayor of Costa Mesa, but now you're obviously the supervisor of District Two. So maybe you can just address it more broadly, you know, the arena issue and, you know, how you see the county supporting the cities. I think, you know, in their efforts to somehow figure this all out.
Yeah, so R E N A means regional housing needs assessment. And that is a coalition of cities get together and they make a recommend recommendations that become mandates to the cities throughout California. And Orange County really got hit with a high number of units to build. As an example, Costa Mesa's, you know, twelve thousand units to build in Costa Mesa. La Palma, eight hundred. Now, that seems like a low number compared to the twelve thousand. But La Palma is essentially a tiny little city that's completely built out and would be hard to find a place to put eight hundred units. So the question becomes, where do we build these units? Especially keeping in mind, and this is a priority for me, and I know many on this call and probably many on the city council for Newport Beach, I know that to be a fact. What, how do we protect traditional single-family neighborhoods while still building enough housing to meet the needs of our community? Anybody on this call who has tried to buy a house recently knows that it is astronomically expensive to buy even the most basic house, one-story, two-bedroom, two-bath, that needs like two hundred thousand worth of work is selling for a million dollars in Costa Mesa right now. It's definitely going to change sort of the whole community. I happen to know this because we're trying to find a house for my mom. And so what did we do? We're building an A D U in our backyard. Newport Beach passed a, a resolution to waive all the permit fees for accessory dwelling units, sometimes referred to as granny units in the city of Newport Beach. I wish that Costa Mesa had done that after I left, of course, but they didn't. And so by comparison, in Costa Mesa, it costs about fifteen thousand, maybe twenty thousand dollars after all the permits are done to, to just get the permits to build an A D U. In Newport, they're waiving all the fees. Now, I don't think they waived the park fee, I mean, the school's fee. So that fee is probably still in place because that goes to Newport Mesa. But accessory dwelling units are allowed now by right under new state law. And you can build up to eleven hundred square feet in, in your backyard if you have the room. And the setbacks are pretty small. So I have a large yard, it's twelve thousand square feet. So we're putting a eleven hundred square foot A D U for my grandma, who is ninety-four, and my mom who is seventy-four. And then I don't have to worry anymore about their housing needs.
We had a question. Well, we had a question that came in over the, my email. So that regards wearing masks. And this one, the question actually referred to, do you like, well, I'll just read it. It says, as a concerned parent, I'd like to know why children are being required to wear masks for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year in Newport Mesa Unified School District. Sent out the email already. My question is, why are children forced to wear masks in public schools? Who's making this decision now? I realize that, you know, the Board of Supervisors doesn't control that. You certainly didn't control that when you were on the, on the city council or mayor of Costa Mesa, because that's a separate school district and they, you know, they make the rules there. That being said, though, you know, we are in a situation where California has opted to stay with the masking requirement to June fifteenth, at least for everybody. And, and then going forward, you know, we, we don't know exactly what that will look like. I'm sure governor will be putting out some new rules. So what are your thoughts on, you know, I think you, Costa Mesa has been pretty proactive on masking all along throughout the pandemic and, you know, so maybe you'd share some of your thoughts on that.
Well, yes, the masks have been for the, for a year, the hot button issue. I, you would think by now we would kind of be over it, but we're not. So I have done a lot of research on this. I don't just follow somebody on, you know, social media as to decisions about the mask or about vaccines. My father-in-law is a scientist retired from U C I. We have a lot of family discussions about vaccines and masks and the efficacy of both, as well as the risks. And I have participated in many health expert seminars with researchers and scientists from John Hopkins University, Harvard, as well as World Health Organization representatives. And worldwide, it is scientifically proven that if you wear the mask when you're not vaccinated, that you are protected to some degree from the spread of COVID nineteen. Now, if you are vaccinated and you are out in public and you don't know if people are vaccinated, it's recommended that you continue to wear the mask. And the reason for that is not about yourself, it's about others. Because even though I'm a hundred percent vaccinated, I can shed the virus. I cannot even know if I have the virus because my symptoms might just feel like I have a cold. Or I might not have any symptoms. But if I'm around somebody who is not vaccinated, maybe that's by a personal choice, which I respect, everyone's personal choice. But, or maybe it's because they have, maybe they're on chemotherapy because they have, they're fighting cancer. Or maybe they have autoimmune compromise situation and they can't get the vaccine. So if we wear our mask in crowded public places, then we're helping others. That's really all it's about, is about helping others. Now, in our office, everyone's vaccinated. And we still wear our mask indoors because Cal OSHA requires it. And I try to follow the rules. And then, but, but when I'm out and when I'm with my family or my friends that are all vaccinated, I don't wear a mask. I had my first on the campaign side fundraising event last night at a restaurant and everybody was vaccinated. We didn't wear our masks. So just use common sense, that's what I say. It's a couple of weeks, we're almost out of this. And then we can all celebrate, we can go to the fair, we can go to concerts in the park, we can go to Disneyland and Knott's Berry Farm, we can shop, we can do all the things we love here in Orange County.
Especially go to Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce events.
That's right, I can't wait to be in person.
We already set our first mixer for the end of June, so.
I want to get that on my calendar, I'll be there.
Full schedule, yeah, coming up in September.
We appreciate the time that you've had to spend with us and, and standing by for questions and answers. And we wish you well and your continued surge of power and energy.
Service, it's a surge of service, not about power.
Very good, very good. So we do thank you and appreciate it very much. So we're going to move on. Who've you got lined up next, Steve?
Why don't we go to Michelle Steele's representative, Andrew DiGiova.
Andrew.
And we'll let.
Andrew is with us.
Thank you, Dennis. Bye-bye.
Breaking you.
There's Andrew. Morning, Andrew.
Great. Good morning, can you hear me okay?
You've got some wonky audio going.
Yes, either that or you had a very long night last night.
Yeah, no good, nope. All right, why don't we do this? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go.
Let me, give me, give me a second.
Yeah, we're gonna go to Alexander Kim, I think, and then we'll come back to you, how about that? There we go. Good morning, Alexander.
Good morning, I'm just like changing my background filter here for a second here.
We don't mind seeing your closet, no.
Yeah, no, it's a little dirty, so. All right, great. How much time do we have yet? I know.
Like five minutes.
Five minutes, all right, great. And then we'll go back to Representative Steele's person. So, yeah, good morning, everybody. So I'll make some comments on behalf of the Assemblymember on the governor's mayor vision, since we get a lot of questions about that. So, you know, over the past year, of course, we've been going through the pandemic and a lot of challenges, especially to small businesses. I know my family has a small business and we lost our restaurant after thirty years. So it's a struggle that I personally have felt a feeling now. But with the help of various loans from the government, from federal, state, it's been, you know, very helpful, but at the same time, you know, it still hurts. And, you know, one of the top priorities for, for our Assemblymember has been helping out the over four million business, small businesses and ten million workers that we employ. And, and we're very happy to, to work with the governor to really allow him to increase and extend the amount of direct relief from two to four billion dollars as people are applying to the, the sixth round, I believe, the California Relief, Relief Loans, I mean, Grants. So as we steer our economy in, in the right direction, we have to secure our also, one of the things that is important to our district here and for Newport Beach is the, our state's role in global innovation. And, you know, being close to U C Irvine next door and various other science, technology companies, that's important to really support job growth as we reopen up and workforce development. And one of the things is the restoration of the California's research and development tax credit. That's not there anymore. And also the ability to report and to report net operating loss. So these are one of the levers that could really pull and encourage investment and growth in our innovation economy. That's what we're known for, whether it's in Silicon Valley or right here in, in Southern California for various industries that are known for developing. And also even attracting foreign companies from overseas such as Samsung. Hyundai, we have a lot of companies from Asia and Europe that chooses our, our Southern California region as, as the place to work and expand upon because of our beautiful weather, our, our great schools and, and everything else that happens here. So people want to still come to California. But that's one of the things that we're going to continue to champion during the budget negotiations with the governor's office and the legislature. You know, and, and speaking of schools, you know, as, as Assemblywoman Cardi Pichu Norris is also a mother and understands how important it is having two kids in, in school to fully return our state into allowing kids to come to the classroom this fall. And please let this budget proposal includes a record level of investment in California schools, including universal transitional kindergarten and expanded early childhood education. Our schools does not, they need more than just temporary support to mitigate the COVID nineteen crisis. And we need a lasting commitment to address the longstanding gaps in education. And we're very supportive of the efforts for all, all the state funding to support full, safe, while we want to fully reopen, we also want to continue to stress about the importance of being safe and, and stemming learning laws. And a couple, a couple more items. So, you know, we've always, even before COVID pandemic, we want to continue to focus our environmental policy and remain a goal, a global leader in confronting the climate change crisis. And we're really pleased about the governor proposing investments also in clean transportation programs and infrastructure, as the supervisor mentioned, climate resilience. We've put in a number of bills to address, especially in our district, including Newport Beach as a coastal district, to make sure that we are prepared for sea level rise. And one of the bills that we were supporting with Senate Bill One regarding to make sure that we take sea level rise into account when we do planning and develop policies and activities to, to establish this collaborative. And to work also in cutting government regulations when it comes to allowing businesses, small businesses, nonprofits and other organizations to restore marine life along the California coast. It's called A V sixty-three, but we call it, you know, you're cutting the red tape. This is called cutting the green tape. So we're doing all that we can to make sure, make it easy for small businesses to participate in these, in types of activities to, as we deal with climate change. And lastly, you know, given that we have a seventy-five billion dollars budget surplus, which was inconceivable a year ago, but it presents us an opportunity for the Newport Beach Chamber and the, the small business members to tackle these, these challenges. And, you know, but we need to also ensure we get the basics right, you know? Because our Assemblywoman is the chair of the accountability and administrative review, basically to make sure that the money gets spent what it's supposed to be spent for and wisely. So, so our boss is really disappointed in, in dealing with the Employment Development Department, the E D D. You know, most of our calls coming to, whether it's federal, state, county, we're getting a lot of calls still, you know, because we have over one million unemployment claims outstanding. This is the reason why, because people are not getting their, their, their unemployment checks. And as budget negotiations continue, we want to see more detailed, action-oriented plans to fix customer service, to modernize call centers, increase claims automation, and implement stronger safeguards to combat fraud. And I won't mention any names, but you know, we have even, even the certain elected official dealing with this, you know, claiming, claiming E D D, but they're still working part-time and having several businesses, that's something that happens mult- multi- That's something that happens multiple, multiple times. But even, even things like that, those highlights that need to really combat fraud. So those are, those are a couple of things I wanted to mention. And a couple of, one, one also thing is that the Assemblywoman was appointed to the Chair of the Select Committee of Small Business and Entrepreneurship. So we're by, by Speaker Anthony Rendon. He's a speaker of the Assembly. And this committee will be dedicated to support small business and entrepreneurs. And we'll be having regional hearings with the speaker up and down the state. So we'll make sure the chamber is notified of this sometime over, over the summertime.
Make sure you have one of those meetings in Newport Beach. I'll, we'll hook you up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do what I can to promote this and at least in our district, right?
Newport Beach.
Newport Beach, all right. You're doing your job, Steve. You're doing your job.
All right. Thank you, Alexander. Andrew, do you?
Thank you.
You have your situation under control there?
I hope so. Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
Absolutely.
Okay, fantastic, great. I've, I've had to learn over the last year to have a second device ready at any moment, just to be able to switch. So thank you so much for, for having me and for putting this on. This has been fantastic to hear from the supervisor and the other representatives, their updates. So it's an honor to be here representing the Congresswoman. I, my name is Andrew and I, I'm serving as the Deputy Director in the Congresswoman's District Office in Huntington Beach. So I, I want to make sure about the time that I conclude on my update, you have my email address. If you have any questions, I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, you can type it into the chat after you're done.
Perfect. Thank, thank you, Steve. So some, some very important bullet points that I thought I'd highlight for you. I, I'd start with more of a fun one and an upbeat one. We just concluded the 2021 Congressional Art Competition, where we had dozens of submissions from students from around the district. The participants and winners alike were all recognized. There was a first, second and third place and a People's Choice Award where people voted on that. The People's Choice will be, will be hung in our district office. So if you ever have a chance to, to drop in and pay us a visit, you'd be able to see that. And the first place will actually be featured in, in Congress along winners from other congressional districts as well. So that was, that was exciting. The first prize winner was a student named Raymond Tran Nguyen. And it was titled Unity. So I think very timely for, for current times. In addition to that, Representative Steele has joined the top Ways and Means Congressman to Act Against Unchecked Unemployment Fraud in Bill HR 3268. The bill would prevent fraud in COVID unemployment programs, recover fraudulently paid benefits and provide relief for taxpayers and victims of unemployment fraud. In addition to that, she's been working on the Quiet Skies Caucus, very important to us, right? And she signed an appropriations letter with the caucus for bill language, directing the FAA to prioritize noise, engage regularly with residents, businesses and elected officials, and annually release data on noise complaints. Already $5 million have been allocated to the FAA to accomplish these ends. And the Congresswoman is pushing for more and she'll continue to do so. In addition to this, she has supported legislation to improve mental health access. She spoke on the floor this last week to double down on her resolution that she sponsored earlier this year to condemn AAPI hate. In addition to that, she's met with local leaders within the AAPI community to launch a new AAPI Advisory Board. We're very excited about that. That's probably the newest board we've launched. And over this last week, she met with local law enforcement from throughout her district to launch a new law enforcement advisory board. She hosted a Teletown Hall to hear directly from constituents. She filled in questions and, you know, she, she was on that for at least an hour answering those questions. So it was very great for, it was awesome to see her able to connect with constituents directly, answer their questions. And, you know, we're going to be looking for more opportunities like that, especially in the age that we're in now. It's so important that, that we find these, these ways to, to connect with, with our constituents. And we had several thousand people on that call, which was very encouraging. So I think that's something that we're going to continue to do. And I'm going to conclude with that. There, there's just so much that the Congresswoman's been working on. I've had the honor of, you know, transporting her to or from the airport for her flights. She, she travels weekly to and from the district on average. And she's just constantly working. I remember when she first went to DC, she was sharing some of her experiences there and how, you know, she, she pulled an all-nighter because, you know, with the various committees that she's on, there's sometimes no time to even sleep, right? It's just go, go, go. And I have so much admiration for her and she's working very hard for the 48th district. So again, I'm so honored to represent her. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me. I'm going to put my email address in the chat as Steve recommended. I'd also like to recommend that just if you, if you aren't already getting our, our weekly updates, we have a newsletter that you can sign up, sign up on, on our website. I'm going to put that link in the chat as well. It's so simple. You just put your name and your email address and you'll start getting those on a weekly basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Quick question. Where did she come down on the vote for the January 6th investigation out the House bill there?
Yeah, the, the count that I saw had her as a no. I don't have the, the argument on one way or another as to why, but I'd be happy to follow up on that.
Okay, well, I guess she wasn't there that day. I think she was outside, so.
Not, not this time, no sir. But thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, we're gonna, at the last minute here, Matt Kern has come on. He represents Dave Min's office, so I'm going to promote him to a panelist here. And hopefully Matt will give us a quick update as well. There we go.
There you go. Good morning, Steve. Good morning, Russ.
Good morning.
So just a quick update, because I know everyone's got to get to work. We've been, we're working on several bills right now. Specific to everyone's interest here is going to be SB 408, which is a $10,000 tax credit for restaurants, bars and hotels. That thing is set for a hearing on May 20th and we're pushing hard for it because we know that's important for businesses in Newport, but really across our district who have been hit so hard by COVID. We have a Cal Savers event that's coming up on May 27th. Businesses that have at least 50 employees and they're not covered by traditional workplace retirement programs are going to have to get registered for this. And so we're going to help businesses kind of figure out, get through that process. It's going to be on May 27th. So look at our social media to get the details about how to connect to that.
Actually, if I could add to that, it's actually, I mean, the deadline's coming up for businesses 50 and up. But if you're a business with five or more employees, I think eventually by next year, you will have to either enrolled in the Cal Savers program or have some type of retirement benefit set up for your employees. And so, you know, be good to attend that program and get a jump on it.
Exactly right. Yeah, the deadline on that is like their June 30th. So 50 plus is June 30th this year and then five plus is June 30th next year. So you're exactly right. And then just one last thing. The center was, you know, happy to, to author the bill that supports the California's Small Business COVID Relief Grants. We just finished the sixth round for that. We've been canvassing local businesses to kind of find out their experience with that. We know it helped a lot of people, but with any program, there's always some snags, so we want to hear about them. And so I will put my contact in the chat and then, you know.
I applied for one, but we didn't get one. What's up?
We want to figure out why.
I've only gotten like one email too about it. It's like, oh, you know, you didn't make this round or something and it'll be entered in later rounds.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, reach out. We've been helping businesses. We want to, you know, we, we know it did some good, but we want to make sure that, we want to know what all the, all the problems in the system were, so we, we want to hear about that.
Very good.
And that's what I've got and I'll leave my, leave my contact in the chat.
Okay, no newsletter?
Thank you.
I think I'm the newsletter right now.
You're the newsletter, okay. Thank you again, Matt. Look forward to seeing you next month. So that's all we have for today. I did want to just give you a couple of quick notes on upcoming programs. So next month for our Government Affairs Committee, we're going to be having, our guest is Chad Lefteris. And Chad's the, I believe his, he's the CEO of UCI Health. And so UCI has actually been very active. They're announced a new hospital that they're going to be building right on the Irvine Newport Beach border. They have a new facility in Newport Beach as well. And so we're looking forward to seeing, you know, what's, what's happening over there at UCI next month. This for our Wake Up Newport meeting, which is always the first Thursday of the month. And this will probably be the last Zoom Wake Up Newport meeting we'll be doing. Hopefully we'll get back at the Newport Beach Public Library starting in July. But in June, and that date is, sorry, June 3rd, we'll be having our District Attorney Todd Spitzer as our speaker. And Todd has several subjects he wants to talk about. I imagine we're going to get some pretty pointed questions there. Todd, he seems to be a lightning rod for a lot of controversy and whether it's the case in Newport Beach of the doctor and his girlfriend and, and how that went back and forth as far as the, some assault allegations. And they're going to be prosecuted and they're not prosecuted. And now the state saying they're going to be prosecuted. And then just some recent controversy over, you know, using public facilities for campaign purposes. So I'm sure there'll be a lot to talk about there. As I mentioned, we'll be having, well, actually I haven't mentioned, but maybe I did earlier. We'll be having our first in-person event for our members in June at Redo Restaurant. It'll be our first mixer. And we're looking at scheduling a full schedule of civic events starting in September with our Fire and Life Bar Dinner and Corona Del Mar Sand Castle Contest. So got a lot of great stuff in store. If you're interested in Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, you can find out about us at NewportBeach.com as well as any upcoming events. And anything else you want to add, Russ?
No, I think you've, as always, covered it plus a little.
Okay, well, I appreciate everybody joining us this morning. I'd be interested to know, and maybe we'll take a vote on the next, next one. We seem to get a lot more attendance or, and can accommodate a lot more people for our Government Affairs Committee meeting, doing it through Zoom as opposed to when we did it in person. For instance, we had, I think, almost 60 people on the call this morning. But, you know, typically we would have 20 in person. So it seems like it's getting out to a lot more people. And maybe we'll do a poll next time and see how many people want to keep it on Zoom, how many would prefer the in-person thing. So that being said, have a great rest of your week and we'll see you soon, hopefully at one of our upcoming programs.
Thanks for being with us.